Alright, I'd like to call to order this Board of Education regular reading Tuesday, November nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. At seven over three, can I get a little call please?
Mrs. Theodore?
Here.
Mrs. Vic Phillips?
Here.
Mrs. Erbiloff Grandfield? Mrs. Deck?
Here.
Mrs. Lala? Mr. Brody?
Here.
Mrs. Tuzio?
Here. We have informed what standard.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America. In exchange for your honor, which stands one nation and our guide, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great deal. This is thank for permission of North School District A.D.'s inspiring educational excellence in a nurturing environment. Celebrate the success.
Yes, so I would like to start off if I can have our prime leaders come up in front of me. We are here to celebrate you more than just that. We appreciate everything that you do in this National Board of Appreciation Month. I believe the actual day is on the fifteenth of November. So the prime leaders are here to represent the students of North School District A.D. And we created a little presentation along with a video for each and every one of you. While the video is being queued up, you will notice at your spot is a little thank you card that has been made by the students of North School District A.D.
You ready?
Yes.
Thank you for the education. For us, you do.
For the students.
For our teachers. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So there's a few pictures of our students, a picture of the board and one of the events that had the one meeting that took place at Giles. And then the picture that is displayed at the North School District A.D. website. So we do have our prime leaders here and they're going to share a little highlight of very thankful for you. Who would like to start?
Thank you for everything that we as students really appreciate all the assemblies and you guys' interest and all the information.
Thank you for all the education that you give us and all the educational benefits we're going to cherish from our website.
Thank you for always making good stuff with the thank you for making style the best for us all.
We appreciate you making our school feel safe and comfortable.
Thank you for helping us see a symbol that is true and we can trust you.
So again, thank you for everything. If we could get a picture with everyone in our prime leaders?
Yeah.
I think that would be great so that we can put on the website. Once again, thank you all.
I like what the thank you signs. I was trying to surprise you.
Whoa.
I didn't know she was just here.
Thanks, thanks for your help.
Okay, say, "Board of Education." "Board of Education."
Yeah, that was a great one, right? More to our welcome, say, to the rest of the meeting, we have a chance to bring you the. Maybe it was a little hard for you. So on behalf of the district, the faculty, the staff, we're thankful. I don't think that anyone realizes what's entailed in this job. You probably did not realize that when you took it as well and all the time and the signals that you will have to make that you had to make. So we appreciate you and we appreciate the questions and we appreciate you being here. So thank you very much for being with us.
Okay, action. Consider motion to approve the agenda as presented. I would motion and I would say.
What?
Um, we got a little call please.
Mr. Tuzio?
Yes.
Uh, Mrs. Deck?
Yes.
Mrs. Theodore?
Yes.
Mrs. Vic Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Erbiloff Grandfield?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Brody?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes. Uh, recognition of visitors, there are no visitors, any correspondence?
No.
Okay, thank you, public participation, there's no public participation. FOIA request, there's none of mention here. On to presentations, district e-learning plan.
Great. Uh, Dr. Raviola and Mr. Viaty are going to present a couple of slides on our e-learning plan. You can understand whatever you're comfortable with.
What do you do?
Um, and now we are asking the board to approve this tonight so we can move forward with this plan.
I can't see, I can't see.
Just as a reminder, e-learning day is a day where the district wouldn't be safe for the students to be in the building. That was because of weather typically when you see that. Uh, either cold or blizzard, like conditions outside. And in that case, we used to go to a snow day, which then would require us to add another day into the calendar, which can cause lots of different issues. But if we have an improving learning plan, then we can flip over to e-learning. And Dr. Raviola and Mr. Viaty will talk about how they're prepared for that in both their buildings.
So this plan is uh, really similar to what we had in a couple of days last year. You want to think you never use that plan until you need it. And that's why we want to make sure that we have all the details worked out early on in this school year. So e-learning school day hours for Lee would be nine AM to forty. The staff hours are seven forty-five to three oh five. And by eight thirty in the morning, teachers would share out what their e-learning schedule would look like. That's why they have that little bit of time in the morning, kind of putting those preparations in place, making sure everything's ready to go for the day. Uh, students would use Google Classroom, uh, if they're using that e-learning platform. Uh, and or Google Meet would be the uh, where they would actually meet with their classmates and their teachers. Uh, they would still have their special for the day, uh, so the day does mirror what our typical school day looks like. Special education services would continue to be provided virtually. All related services would still provide teletherapy for students who would normally be seen during that typical timeframe. Uh, overall, students would receive five hours of instruction, which may be synchronous or asynchronous lessons. Uh, but during the time where it may be more independent, asynchronous work, uh, teachers would work with small groups and still be available to provide any additional support for students who may have a question or want that. Uh, our preschoolers would receive two and a half hours of instruction. A good chunk of that would be asynchronous. It's really hard to keep an attention span of a three or four year old for a long period of time. But there would be small group check-ins. You know, usually, you know, one or two students would meet with a teacher at a time throughout those uh, morning afternoon sessions. So a little overview of our plans, instructional minutes, uh, fifteen minutes would be set in our social emotional learning, having a morning meeting, closing circle, running through all the logistics of that day. Takes a little bit more time on the e-learning day. Uh, specials for forty-five minutes, there's a forty with lunch break, ninety minutes allocated for reading, thirty for writing, sixty for math, and thirty for science or social studies.
For Giles School, our e-learning school day for the students will be eight twenty-five in the morning till two fifty. Our staff hours will be the same as they currently are working, which is seven fifty-five in the morning till three fifteen. Students will follow their daily schedule. We will utilize the Google Classroom for our e-learning platform and Google Meets. Uh, so they will just join their teacher's Google Classroom. Special education services will continue to be provided. All related services will continue to be teletherapy for students sessions that are normally scheduled. And students must participate in class and be visible in order to be marked as present. That means that they have to have their cameras on. We want to ensure that they're engaged in the activity, they're participating to do them, we need to make sure that their cameras are on. Uh, student win period will be asynchronous learning. They'll be continuing what they're doing uh, throughout the week. Each day at Giles, we have the, for example, vocabulary that they're working on, uh, grammar, novel reading. So they will continue with all of that. And our students that are at the tier two, tier three would continue on their pathway utilizing the I-Ready uh, reading or math curriculum. Our schedule, when you're looking at right here, is the schedule for staff. There's actually a staff schedule and a student. The student is everything except for the building meeting, uh, except for the building meeting. So what they have is the um, seven fifty-five to eight twenty-five, I will have a building meeting with all these, with all the staff. Kind of give them what's going on, what I know, what the plan is, and then allow them the rest of the time to prepare for their classes. Then they will begin with a twenty-five minute advisory. And then they will, students will follow their schedule. As I said, a win and lunch will be asynchronous. And then students will be done at two fifty and then teachers will have office hours. If there's any questions, concerns, student they have, they can reach out to their teacher from two fifty to three fifty.
And that concludes our e-learning plan. Does anyone have any questions?
I have one, I think it's on the shelf, so. When typically is the decision made to go to e-learning?
That's a difficult answer. I'm going to say as soon as possible, um, but we'll definitely make that decision by five thirty, six o'clock in the morning.
Okay.
Um, what usually would happen, I'm in a group chat with other area superintendents, definitely from New York and Ridgewood is who I mainly talk to, but I do talk to the other Lydon superintendents as well. If we're able to call it the night before, we will. Um, and then I usually try to drive in around four, four thirty, seeing how the roads are and what's going on. Usually Dr. Raviola is here with me with coffee, which is great, it's usually picks it up, but then we figure out, you know, what looks best on the day. Unless we know for sure we're calling and it's conflict then.
Thank you.
It's hard to answer. But I have checked with all of the area superintendents and everyone is going to go with e-learning. Guys, instead of some.
No more debates, snow days are happening.
Things are going. And over at uh, it's very easy for Giles to flip to e-learning because most of their work will be accessed through the Chromebook. Lee has sent Tom Blizzard to us. So uh, parents have just been told to put those aside in case they're needed so that everyone is prepared. Last year was a little difficult for Lee in the second day. You recall around, um, it's in January, around the second week of January, we have the first day where um, we had work, everything was fine. The second day was a little harder. So they've brainstormed some ways to get past that this year at Lee and be prepared for it. In case that happens. It's also right around the holiday last year as well. And we did, the whole ed team came in the second day, that was the very, very cool day we dealt with.
Thank you. Uh, on to Illinois School Report Card later.
Great, thank you. So as you um, know, the Illinois School Report Card comes out October thirtieth every year and it's released. Of course, we have the information about our district, which is like embargo data until that comes out. So it's always a November meeting that I'm able to share this with you and uh, look at some other comparisons around. Um, and then you will have to look at this screen now, so I apologize. So there are five summative designations for a school district, as you can see online there, and we'll read them all to you. Um, Giles and Lee have both qualified in the commendable area, which means that overall performance is not in the top ten percent of schools. However, there are no targeted student groups at or below the all students group of lowest performing five percent of schools, which is a lot to say. Basically, we're not below five percent of the schools and uh, we're not a high school, so we don't have to have that graduation rate of sixty-seven percent. There are three levels below us, intensive, comprehensive, and targeted, and then exemplary above us. Basically, the difference between us and exemplary is we just didn't fall into the overall performance in the top ten percent of schools. It's hard to say where that cutoff is over here because it's always different. It's whatever the top ten percent is, especially when you're using like local norms like that, it's whatever the top ten is. Uh, here is again what they used uh, for the elementary, middle school bands. And the areas that are in the blue shades are the academic areas. And then there are two areas in the yellow, uh, the climate survey, which is the five essentials that's put out every year, uh, that the principals are always rated about in the tracks. And then a chronic absenteeism was also used in the school quality, student success area. Over on the blue side, we have various forms of the IAR assessment, uh, growth and proficiency, which will go through both of those for science and ELA, uh, also talking about our English language learners and our uh, science assessment. So what the state does is they give us this cute little graphic for all of the schools. And do keep in mind, any school in Illinois, any public school in Illinois, you can go on the Illinois School Report Card and access this. Uh, this is Giles. As you can see at the top, the overall index score was seventy-two point six four. On the ELA and math proficiency areas, we had uh, almost all of the percent of points on that. That just basically means that we met proficiency on growth on our, uh, where our students landed moving forward on their test results. The growth area there, which I'll go through the ELA and math growth in a moment, uh, was not quite at the twenty-five percent, um, eighteen point five for ELA and seven, and fifteen point two eight is how many points we received on both of those growth points. Our English language learners was a percent, um, our science proficiency, along with our climate survey and our chronic absenteeism, which we'll go into each of these separately. Good thing to point out on our climate survey at this point, that is just that we had people answer it. That we had twenty percent of our families in the district answer it. That's why we always hear uh, people, our principals asking, um, special man, PTA, you know, really urging people to answer the survey. So when you see that, please keep that in mind that it does account for five percent of our overall growth, so it's really important. And we do look at the um, data also, but at this point, as far as the state goes, it's just people answering it. Looking at Lee, they're at sixty-seven point sixty-two percent on the commendable. Um, some of the same areas that we see, Lee did need their proficiency on ELA and on math. We'll go through the growth and then of course, we have the climate survey and the um, chronic absenteeism that we'll talk about. So student proficiency, so proficiency is whether or not the students have mastered the standard. So it's like a yes or no. This is not measuring growth of the student, it just says, does the student master the standard? Yes, the student does, or no, the student doesn't. So looking at proficiency, just comparing right here, this is North School District A.D. to the state results. Our proficiency area for ELA was fifty-five percent, so fifty-five percent of students who, who answered the um, question correctly. Fifty-five percent. Then at thirty-two with math and fifty-nine for science. So in each of the areas above the state average. Then when we look at student growth, this is the percentile that describes how much a student grew compared to their academic peers who started at the same level. So this would be, for example, if whatever a student received on the IAR score last year, if the student, same grade, same subject, same test, within all the other students that were in that same level, how much did the student grow compared to all those other students? At that same level, same grade, same test. And uh, ELA and on math, we are around the same, right around the state average of fifty and forty-nine. State average being fifty. So this is comparing to all the students' growth within the state. This is one of those areas that the state uses to um, create the numbers when they decide in the house as far as if your commendable or exemplary and the difference between the two are those student growth numbers. So those are pretty important numbers. Now, when you look at our IAR overall data, this is our overall data and I included here from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-four. Remember, this is last year's data that we're looking at. Um, and in twenty twenty, so you recall with COVID, we did not take IAR that year, they just canceled completely. Uh, most people were home learning at that point, so that's why you see the no data available. So just quick looking at our ELA data, you can see back in twenty nineteen, where we were in those uh, five different areas. Twenty twenty-one, you certainly see a very large dip in not just our scores, but across the state. And you can see as far as ELA goes, we've definitely been building that better. You might have heard a lot of people on the news this year say, you know, we're back to pre-COVID numbers in a lot of our IAR scores. Uh, definitely for us, we can say, yeah, from ELA, that that's true, uh, we're even a little bit higher than we were in two thousand nineteen. Um, if you're looking at just the light colored green, which is needing the standard, and the dark colored green, which is exceeding the standard. Those are the kind of the two areas that are the most important. Looking back at the yellow and the orange and the red, those are where you're still working your way towards it with approaching or partially needing or did not need. Interestingly, we looked through the data and uh, it's interesting to see how many points off many students are in approaching. They could be one or two points away from getting into that meeting section. That is a big area that um, we try to focus on, uh, so we can get kids over that home. Our math data is um, improving, but not quite where it was the pre-COVID numbers of twenty nineteen. Definitely, we've seen an increase in our math data over the years. Um, but that way twenty-eight for meeting and four point three of our exceeding, but certainly not where we would like to be. This also is across the state. I don't know if you've read, there was a Tribune article that was just out recently stating that the state is taking really a deep dive into um, the math assessment of why school districts aren't performing as well in math. In, in theory, if the IAR is written based on the standards and we are teaching the standards within the school districts in the state, we should be doing better on this assessment. So there is something, not just with us, but I'm not using that as an excuse, we know we have a work cut out for us with math. I did then go into each individual uh, grade levels two at a time, so I looked at third and fourth grade ELA. And you can see the first two numbers are third grade and fourth grade, just comparing twenty-four and twenty uh, three. Now remember, these are different students. So in some ways, it's not comparing student to student, but it is still uh, an area where we use to assess our programming on where our students are going. So we see uh, some, some good movement in third and fourth grade from where we were in twenty-three and twenty-four. Happy about that, we did, we have switched an ELA program also in third and fourth grade. Not saying it's a hundred percent responsible for that, but that is something we look at as our programming. Looking at math, we definitely see uh, a lot of increase there in third grade and a slight bit in fourth grade, which is what we want to see, so that's good. Going over to fifth and sixth grade ELA, comparing twenty-three and twenty-four together, uh, we definitely saw a larger percent of exceeding in twenty-three, but now we do see a larger percent of um, meeting in twenty-four. Same in fifth and sixth grade. Looking at math, we do see some increases, um, but not very, very large, but there are some increases there. Sixth grade, we don't see as much uh, exceeding as we did see in twenty-three, but we are in the same number of, of meeting or exceeding. Then looking on to seventh and eighth grade ELA, we see there are twenty-three, um, comparing twenty-three and twenty-four, we might, we have a little bit more of a dip here and our twenty-three, um, from where twenty-four is. So definitely looking deeper into the standards that are in seventh and eighth grade for ELA as well as in math. We are able to go down and drive into individual students somehow they did and also look at individual standards to see what standards we need to focus on. A little bit later in the presentation at the end, when we talk about what work we're doing, I will uh, go deeper into what we're doing to help fill up our scores. Of course, uh, Dr. Raviola and Mr. Viaty spoke last month about the school improvement plans and that's all, that all works made in hand from bringing up our scores as well. Here are our, our science, which is taken in fifth and eighth grade, just comparing the twenty-three and twenty-four years. I'm sorry, there's twenty-one there as well. Apologize, felt bad. So we see the increase in our science scores. Now, I did look at some data compared to, so it's, it's really difficult to decide uh, which districts do we, are we going to compare to? You know, so I pulled in the districts that I spend most time with in our areas, which of course is Unim Ridge and Norwood. Um, I wouldn't, I spent a lot of time with Ridgewood as well, but they're taking a different test, or they don't even take IAR at all. And then I looked at our other schools that are part of the Lydon, um, Norwood, Lydon Ath- I can't remember the association, the athletics that we work with, so I kind of stuck with this core, these ten uh, districts and the rest of the data that I'm about to go through with you. Although, I did add Park Ridge in there, they are not part of our group, but I thought it would be interesting to include them in our data as well. And as you can see, Park Ridge was, is, this is actually done in order of the highest down to the lowest, Park Ridge being the first one, Unim Ridge after that, and Norwich for ELA was in the third. Our school district, and then you can see everyone who falls in below that. Looking at math data, the top three were exactly in that same order. Little different once you get to pass that. If you look at up Norwood on ELA, it was a little further down, and then on math was a little further up. I then looked at our kindergarten readiness information, which is also part of the Illinois School Report Card. This was really interesting to me because our kindergarten readiness here shows um, that, so the kindergarten test is taken one time a year and our kindergarten teachers give this to the students, usually about the end of September, beginning of October, and this is more of an observational test. Checklist so that the kids aren't taking this test, this is called the KIDS assessment. And the state came out with the KIDS assessment, I should have many years ago when I was still teaching. We had just started the KIDS, um, and it looks at our social emotional development, it also looks at language literacy development and math development. And you can see from these results that we are very behind um, on where some of the state averages are, state numbers.
Switch to the right as the state, the dark.
Dark range.
Yep.
So big area of concern for me, um, and we've taken a couple of steps to look at our kindergarten data. More importantly, we're looking at preschool program because as you recall, we had, at the beginning of the year last year, we had space for thirty-four students um, in the preschool program. That increased and we started up at a hundred students in January of last year. So we've put a lot of resources into our kindergarten, our preschool program, excuse me. Um, and we have uh, Wes Forty coming in, working with our, our, uh, our admin team and working with our teachers um, in order to improve our preschool numbers, our preschools, so that our transition from preschool. so that our transition from preschool to kindergarten, which is one of the most difficult transitions in the building, to be honest with you. You go from a two and a half hour preschool day that is very play-based, which is great, wonderful, to a pretty traditional sit-down at a table kindergarten setting. So we're really working on coming in and how we can help support our preschoolers, especially if the majority of our 100 students that are taking advantage of the preschool program, the majority of them are from our district, which is, as you recall, once we have open spots and we don't have people on our waitlist from our district, we do, since it's state grants, have to allow students outside of Norwich School District to attend. So we do have some kids from other areas attending. But this is becoming a big area for us to focus on. Now, chronic absenteeism, you'll recall, was one of the areas on the house that they were using on the yellow side of student achievement. And here, hopefully you can follow this graph. It has the numbers that were reported on chronic absenteeism. Chronic absenteeism means that you've missed 10% of the school year. So 176 days of attendance, you know, somewhere between 17 and 18 days. This has become a big topic today, especially among the assistant principals because they are the ones who are in charge of making the phone calls to families when they start to get, we start alerting families when they're at five absences in the school year. And then of course, there's a whole hierarchy when it goes up from there. Families aren't usually very friendly and happy when they get a phone call from the assistant principal about attendance. But we are continuing to work on this. And you can see that outside of Union Ridge and Park Ridge, everyone is pretty high on their percent of chronic absenteeism. Something happened after COVID where people started to feel like school was a little more optional. We see many more people taking family vacations and that is important. I do believe family time is important, but we also need to make sure that we're in school. Looking back at 2019, which I don't have a son of graph, we were 2% with our chronic absenteeism. That was very, very low. But as I mentioned, outside of Union Ridge and Park Ridge, everyone is at pretty high chronic absenteeism rate.
Sorry, Elm Park is what, 401.7?
401, I'm sorry, that's school district number.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, I apologize. I, that was actually more for me, so I can see which one's where.
Okay.
Now, thank you, Elm Park, and I thank you for bringing that up. They are the only unit district in this group, which means they are an elementary, a middle, and a high school. So do keep in mind that 401 district is a high school as well. That's the only district up here that has high school numbers for something like chronic absenteeism. So I pulled in a bunch of other information I thought you might find interesting. This is the teacher pupil ratio that is going on in all of those same nine different districts, kind of including us. District 80 is a 20 to 1. If you're looking down at Rhodes, which is the lowest one there, the 84.5, they're at 11 to 1 on the pupil teacher to pupil ratio. Everyone else is falling somewhere around that same 15, maybe a little lower. District 80 is considerably higher on our teacher to pupil ratio. So what does that mean? You know, that could mean more teachers in the building. That could mean less students in the building as well. And in one way or another, you have more individualized time for instruction when you have a higher number of teacher to pupil ratio. So let's be for a moment about operating expenses per pupil. This is how it is written on the Illinois School Report card. And this is calculated by how much it costs the school district on average to educate each student. It's a way of how we measure how much to spend on daily operations in the school district. So they take the amount of money that we spend educating our students and they take out of that the capital project money. So 60, 60 is the fund that is all our capital projects. But also, any of the other accounts, like 10, which is our education area, might have some capital money left. For example, if you were going to buy a copy machine in the Lee School office, that might be out of a capital account that is in the Lee School office, which would be in 10, not in 60 for second construction. So they take out any kind of capital accounts. They also take out any expenses that you spend on tuition. So therapeutic schools, any West 40 schools that a student might attend, but they take all of that out since that's not included in how they come up with operating expenses. They also take out the money that we spend on the bond. So the interest payment and the bond payment that we're paying, I believe this month, I think, in the bills or at least the bond payment. So they come up with an average spending per student amount. And here is that same comparison. District 80 was at $12,000 of an average per student. Looking at that next couple of schools right over, that's a $14,000 amount. And then of course, it goes up from there. And you know, you could say 12,000 and 14,000 isn't that big of a difference, but it is $2,000 per student. And if you're talking about 1,000 students, it does add up to quite good money. It could be an additional four or five staff members. You know, looking all the way towards the end there, Rhodes. I know it. But if you do recall, when we were looking at the per pupil here, Rhodes was on there for about 11 teachers per student ratio. I also pulled teacher salaries to take a comparison of them. Starting at the left and then going down and up to the right. Noria starting down at the lowest at this point. Remember, these are last year's numbers. And then Park Ridge ending down at the far right bottom. We were, I'm right in the middle. On our, this is an average teacher salary. Now, this is a lot to take into consideration. How old the staff is as far from the years they've been here, not how old in age, but how long the years they've been on staff. Their level of education is important. They have a master's, they have above a master's. Because of the teacher salaries, your number of years that you've worked and your education are what makes a difference on teachers' compensation. I also pulled the admin salaries since those are part of that as well. And again, starting at the top as the lowest and shriveling down and then back up to Schiller Park at the end. Again, a lot has to do with how many years people have been in an admin position.
Can you remind us which one is a unit district?
Yes, 401, which is Elm Park. So if we look back here, Elm Park was at 81, 812. Makes a big difference in a, in a unit district. So thanks for bringing that up. High school salaries just are typically higher than elementary school salaries. I remember one time when I was teaching and I had a visitor come and observe and ask me if someday I want to make more money and work in a high school. It's quite a funny question. So then on the admin salary side, we see there's Elm Park, Elm Park at 121. A high school will also have many more levels, lower leveled administrators. You might have a dean in there, things like that, which will cause your average salary to go up. Most of the time in elementary school, we'll have all those different levels. So looking at our school improvement plans, and again, I know that Dr. Raviola and Mr. Veyati did speak about them a lot last month, so I won't go into a great deal, but I do want to remind you of a few things. We are in a five-year cycle in our professional learning communities. We're in year three. The first year, we had identified our standards, which again, if those are in line with what's on the IAR, then everything really should flow together. Last year, we spent a bit of time looking at our common formative and summative assessments. And now this year, we're really focusing on our proficiency standards, which is when we look at how students do on a particular standard, kind of like the rubric of what's in the standard. We're spending a lot of time doing that currently right now. We're looking at tiered support moving inside the classroom. This is really the first time across the whole district that we're working on that tiered support in the classroom. Typically, what would happen in the classroom is the teacher would work on that lesson that they're doing that day, practice, practice, practice that lesson. But now we're looking at what are the steps that you need to be proficient in before you can do this? And how can we then go back and help you on those other steps? We've always intervened at a tier two or tier three. However, now we're really pushing that into our major experts, which are our teachers in the classroom in the moment, so they can work with the students. We are looking at bilingual and ESL student support. That program is completely different this year for our Ukrainian, our Spanish, and our Polish language learners. But it's also a different look at our ESL students in general, who are not any of those three languages. And that they are spending the entire day and they're purposely scheduled to be with an ESL teacher, teacher certified in ESL throughout the day, which has been difficult to schedule, but I think we're, we're getting through the humps of that. We are also working with West 40 on some professional development in this area, as well as our preschool program that I mentioned earlier on our slide. Our assistant principals are working very hard on attendance and tardies and that tiered approach. We do have some students, unfortunately, that we're going to be caught in the police in for tickets on already in November because they've missed so much school at this point and kids need to be in school. We have branching minds running full now on our data review and our tiered plans for students so that we can really zone in and identify what areas they need support in. And we are continuing those after-school supports as well as those supports in the school day at both schools. We will be in, coming back out in the new year in '25, be looking at some, as I did, as I mentioned to you, those kids that are just a few points away of meeting on the IAR, we'll be meeting with them, having some after-school opportunities for them to help, help them become a little more proficient in those standards as well. And that's it. It has a wealth of information. A lot of things I know that you, Mr. Tavuzio, have been talking about the IAR scores probably for the last 10 years. And sharing those results, especially the results that we have right here for our ELA and our math data. Now, I can sum it up to say that we have, we have work to do. We're in the top three of those 10 on ELA and in math. And the bottom as far as the number of dollars that we're spending on educating kids. But we are, so that means that we're doing well with what we have. We can certainly always improve and do better, which is what we're looking for.
Definitely, you're seeing with the state, like researchers in why math is not, scores are equal to about many districts and scores can be developed now. And it is a game, even compared to that across all districts. And it doesn't exist. They're the ones setting the standards. Anyway, thank you for that, it's very cool. And can I add on the website soon?
Yes. I will put it, we put everything from my discussion on the website the next day. I will also be sharing this in a little more detail on this with my, with the superintendent advisory committee on December 7th. Is our next meeting, it's the 7th, or just the first Thursday in December is our next meeting, 2nd, 3rd, 4th, 5th.
Instead of mentioning it later, you may consider excerpts of that or some of the, you can look back at parts of that for in the newsletter. Some will come up.
Yeah, and I do have a little information about that in my discussion report.
Oh, sure. Time to administrative reports. Ms. Suez?
I have everything in my discussion this morning.
Thank you. Special education, Mr. Minister?
Yeah, I just have two pieces. One of them is actually a celebration. We recently had a preschool field trip. Our youngest Tigers got to go to the Brookfield Zoo. So a very big thank you to Ms. Healy, Ms. Bricko, and Ms. Gomez. It's not easy, you know, wrangling a bunch of three and four-year-olds to the zoo, as you might imagine. So it was quite a success for us. And the other one was, we recently also had our ML night where we had 17 newcomer families come and attend, learn a little bit more about our ML program and got to learn a lot of the resources that we have in the community. And again, another very big special thank you to I Power Library for supporting us during that event. That's my report.
Thank you much. Did the preschool have to be matching t-shirts at the zoo?
Not at all.
We did.
Okay, on to building reports, Travis School, Mr. Veyati?
End of the trimester is this Friday, November 22nd. Progress reports will be mailed home, or emailed home, I should say, on Friday, December 6th. When we come back from Thanksgiving break, our teachers will be adding comments. And that's why the progress reports are going home on December 6th. And then when we come back from Thanksgiving break, we will be having our winter benchmarking assessments taking place. There will be fast bridge for our fifth graders, I-Ready reading, our SABERS, which is our SCL that the students take, the SABERS, which is what our teachers take for their students, and then MAP ELA and MAP Math. That will all take place after Thanksgiving and before winter break. And that concludes my report.
Thanks, Ms. Please go to the room.
So basically everything Mr. Veyati said also applies to Lee, but also want to add a thank you to the PTA for creating stay a week there to Lee and also for the book fair. It was great. And then just want to add that on December 12th, we'll have our first and second reading season cap. It will be the snowy day. We're hoping to have many families up there.
Discipline reports, Travis, Ms. School?
We have one in school suspension in violation of board policy 7:197, 9, and 21. One in school suspension in violation of board policy 7:195, and 21. Three in school suspensions in violation of board policy 7:199, and 21. And one out of school suspension in violation of board policy 7:194, 9, 18, and 21. That is my report.
Thank you. Leading, Mrs. Aaron?
We had one out of school suspension in violation of board policy 7:199, and one out of school suspension in violation of board policy 7:1921.
Thank you. Board committees. Education, nothing to report. Board policy development, 117 is coming up soon.
Yes, we have, I have this in my discussion. Lots of policy tonight, policy policy.
Building grounds, anything, we have the committee meeting.
Uh, mid, in between this meeting and the last one.
Yeah.
We are looking at our summer projects coming to the board this summer. An update on our facilitation, our facilities.
Behavior intervention, nothing to report. Divotations of human resources, that will be touching on a closed session. Head on to the finance section here, review. Head onto the finance section here, review tentative twenty-two for tax levy.
Thinking, Mrs. DeBoer will lead us through this.
If you look at the first slide here, this is our fund balances. Everything we do in the business office is all connected. When you're working on the budget, you have to look at what you did in the levy to know how much you're going to collect in revenue. When you do the tax levy, you have to look at the budget and see where you put your expenses. And when you're working on all of those things, you need to know what your fund balances are. You need to know where you're at. So in the past couple of years, the state passed two public acts regarding fund balances. One of them is that we just have to simply disclose what our fund balances are at the time that we adopt the levy. This shows our fund balances as of the draft of our AFR that I, we're waiting on our final audit, and as of six thirty, and then what our fund balances were as of October thirty-first. So if you look at the end of six thirty, we've had about eight point one million in fund balance. And at the end of October, we had about ten point three million, which makes sense because we took in our fall collection for taxes. So we should have a higher fund balance at the end of October than June because that money should last us until we get to March, when we start collecting the spring collection. This is a new public act that has to do with having excess expenditures. So what the state is making all school districts do is look back over the past three years in your operating funds. And for this particular public act, they are just considering ten, the ed fund, twenty operations and maintenance, and forty transportation to be the operating funds. They do not count working cash into this formula. So they look back at the past three years for what your expenditures were in all three of those funds. They combine them, and then they finally average. Then they look at what your fund balances were at the end of that third year. So what we have here are FY twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two's expenditures, twenty-twenty-three's expenditures, twenty-twenty-four expenditures, the average of those three years, and then our cash reserve balances at the end of twenty-twenty-four. And what the state says, if you have two point five times cash reserves of your average three years of expenditures, you have to adopt a reserve reduction plan by the end of December. Well, good news, we don't have to adopt a reserve reduction plan. We have about twenty point two-six, not two and a half times. When we normally talk about our fund balances, how our operating balances, it's normally higher than that because we're counting working cash. So it's not that we now have twenty-six percent. We still have that forty percent. This formula just doesn't have working cash. This, which is kind of small, so that you guys should have it in your board packet, is our actual certificate of tax levy. This is what we will submit to the county. When you do the tax levy, there's three different words that you hear. Tax levy is the ask. It's how much we are asking the county for. The extension is how much the county says we should receive, and that is billed to homeowners. And then the collection is how much money we actually collect. So for the tax levy, I can ask for anything in the world. It doesn't mean we're going to get it. The past couple of years, when we did the tax levy, we had a deep truth in taxation. That is if we create a levy that is five percent higher than the prior year's extension. This year, our levy is not five percent higher than the prior year's extension, so we do not have to go through the truth in taxation process. CPI is three point four, so that's what we know we should get. We have to create a levy that's higher than three point four so that we can capture any new construction that is outside of that. So our levy this year is four point nine-six. So we stayed under that five percent, so we don't have to go through the truth in taxation process. But we still believe that we will be high enough to capture everything. This page is more, this is what we are projecting to be a realistic view. So the twenty-twenty-three tax extension, that is what we actually got. That's what the county said. This is how much you can have. Currently, we're at about a ninety-five percent collection rate of that. So we haven't collected all of that, but we've collected about ninety-five percent. Then our tax levy is four point nine-six percent higher than the extension. But the amount that the county is going to give us for our bond is probably going to be lower than last year. So once you add in the amount for the bond, we're actually at about a four point eight-six tax levy. But to be realistic, we're not going to get four point eight-six percent. We'll probably get about three point seven-two with the bond, about three point eight without the bond. So the last column, that's where we're projecting our extension to be. So the middle column is what we're going to ask for, but the last column is what we are probably going to get.
Could you just mention about the bond? Is that part of the four point nine-six percent?
No. So the bond itself, so when we create the levy, we create it for every fund except for debt service. The county has our bond payment. So the county tells us how much we can have for the bond. So then they give us, they add that to the extension. This year, we have to, we'll have a resolution at the next board meeting that we have to for our previous bond that we received, that we paid, that we spent all of it by the end of last April. When we got that bond, and the company who we got it from, and they sent it to the county, and they projected, they project the interest rates that we will need to pay that bond off. When we got it, no one ever knew that CPI was going to be five percent two years in a row because historically that has never happened, and it had been like one point four percent, less than one percent. So we need to raise our bond amount so we can capture enough to go forward. So it's not going to be, it's going to be a very minimal amount, but it's just so we can capture enough because we had only projected that interest would be high enough. So we need to raise what we need to make the bond payment because CPI was five percent for two years. Anybody have any questions?
So this was the tentative levy. Next month, we will do the final levy. And this is where we, as we mentioned, we decide how much of those tax dollars that we have projected to collect, how much goes into each fund. Once money's in the fund, sometimes there are resolutions that you would have to move things around, but most of the time there's not. You know, whenever we want, like last year, if you recall, when we needed to move some money around into tech because tax dollars were delayed, we were able to move some money out of working cash into that, and then we put it back after we read other tax dollars. That certainly is one of the areas where you as a board could pass a resolution to do that. But we can't just say like, oh, let's take money out of transportation and put it in an education. You can't do those things. Very strict laws on moving money around in a school budget, one budget, some.
Well, that was good. Thank you. Communications, anything?
Mrs. Buzyk sent over some input from her superintendent advisory board.
Yep.
In terms of content ideas for the next edition.
Because we've been sending that out quarterly, so we'll be just getting it to the next quarter.
Sure.
It went through.
Are you going to, is that something for discussion items or?
I do have that in my discussion.
Okay. Orange Park District?
Yeah, we met a week after our last board meeting. And like Michelle said, it was a really good meeting. Definitely want to work with the district and come up with some creative ideas that we can incorporate both taxing bodies to make the district and students in the district have a great experience. And some ideas they threw out were a kickball tournament that they would like to host. They talked about potentially District AB Pool Day, where all District AB students will be able to use the pool. And so we're excited to see what, you know, some of these ideas are going to be put together. We made it clear that they can promote their programs via the school. If it's set up a table, kind of, you know, refresh the parents of fourth year, fifth year, all the programs they have. So we can, that was a good meeting. People go over close on contract pieces that they wanted to discuss. But overall, we're going to be excited to see. They did have a little bit, I don't remember, but at one point, we asked them to look into landscaping and cutting grasses and stuff like that. So they're going to go back and see what that quote was and revisit it and see. I said they can go through the motions to see where, we don't know if they're there yet, we'll talk to Derek. But they did also say, you know, mention about utilizing some of our fields, and that will be a counter of them taking care of our fields. So but just more comments are there.
No, I think that's pretty much it, except for what we just talked about in close with contract. But yes, they did, I did have that previous second quote. I don't know, it was probably twenty-twenty, somewhere in there. They were looking at that, and they do have an interest in the field back as I'm there. Thank you. So the first part of business, wanted to talk about like the Superintendent Advisory Committee. As I mentioned, we have another meeting coming up on December fifth. This month of November was a type of communication. So we talked about the tracks. Overwhelmingly, they like the new format of the tracks, where we have the links on the side instead of having pages and pages to scroll. One suggestion that they had is maybe if it is a district event, and it's the first time it's hitting the tracks, maybe to put that actual thing to scroll. And then once it's done, it's like debut, then it just goes over to the link side. So that is something that we're considering at this juncture too. And only for district events, not community events, meaning PTA, MSF, things like that. We spent a quite bit of time, I have to tell you, like these meetings are, I usually shoot for an hour. We were there about two hours or fifteen minutes. We spent a lot of time looking at the website and wonderful feedback and ideas on the website and how we can improve the website and improving communication. I had given that a little form to fill out beforehand. And actually, many of the people's feedback was, yeah, the website's great. But then once we started really getting into the question about it, it was like, oh, well, wait, we can actually approve this, we can approve this. I mean, I didn't even know that was up there. So really great feedback. The quarterly newsletters, they gave us some feedback on, they like the information that is presented there, and they want a little more information from the board. They'd like financial information, they would like data. They would like us to be able to send out those type of things along from the board as well. We talked a little bit about districts and school blasts. Right now, they would like to see, which I think many people would, the text messages to come back. Currently, we don't have that technology set on our side. What happened in Power Schools, Power Schools kind of filled with a bunch of different, like, think of it as a plugins. They changed one of the plugins this year to School Messenger. School Messenger, when they had that move over, kind of lost some of that ability to have some of that texting. And then put in a line that said, okay, you can bring out the texting, but you need to go to each family and say, do you want texting, do you want texting, do you want texting? So we're kind of in the process of putting that together right now. Think what we're probably going to do, which is going to be a little labor-intensive for us, is send out a Google form that we're going to have families fill out to say, what email do you want to receive this? What text do you want to receive this? And just update everything on our site, which is going to be labor-intensive and difficult because sometimes people don't answer those as well. So this is something that Mrs. DeCintio is going to be focusing on in December before she starts turning towards, you know, getting feedback in for twenty-five, twenty-six and getting registration started for twenty-five, twenty-six, which is hard to believe, but we already are looking at that. They also brought up many points about Dojo, which they truly like. And also, they like the ability that Dojo, which is a messaging system used at LEED, is able to translate into so many different languages. They would like us to consider Dojo at Giles as well. That is not something that I've spoken with the Advent team about. That was something that was pretty strong from the group last month, end of this month in November. Next month, we're going to be talking about our district and school data. I'll be showing them much of what I just shared with you and then a couple other extra things as well. So it's a good meeting so far, ten individuals. Last month, we met at Giles. This month, we'll come back to LEED. And hopefully, I will get them up a little sooner. They were great though, they really were. I wanted to point out to the board that the Advent team just recently went through a day of SAVOM training. SAVOM stands for School Safety and Violence Event Incident Management Training. That's, that's my call. This training was done with the first responders from Union Ridge, Pinoyar, Ridgewood. Also, Shiller Park was in attendance, Franklin Park was in attendance as well, and the school districts, just the Union Ridge, I'm sorry, Union Ridge, Ridgewood, and Pinoyar school districts. So this training, actually, Mrs. DeBoer and I went to a training, a SAVOM training at triple I last year at the joint conference, which she and I will be attending this weekend. And we went to a quick little hour-long training on this from another school district that talked about it. And we actually brought this to Chief Goss at an Orange Police Department, who was able to bring us to our area. And it was great training. I mean, there are trainings that you go to that you kind of walk away from and you think, well, I don't know how we can do that, where we can put this in. But everyone who attended from the Advent team really felt we learned a lot. The first day was just with the emergency response personnel. So that was so that they can work through their procedures. So if there was an emergency response needed at a school district, what that would look like for them. And they were able to all work together from Shiller Park and Norwood Park and Howard Heights and Norwich, and really kind of act out scenarios, and very detailed on the acting of scenarios. And then the second day is when the school districts came in, and we then learned about what they would do in an incident. And then the second part of our day, which was the more important part for us, is we worked on a reunification plan. So if there was some incident that caused our district or one of our schools to move into a crisis mode, we talked about where that unification would go, how that would work, what are the different roles, what's the materials we need in order to put that together. I have met previously with Pinoyar and Hugh Rachel Ridgewood about our unification plans, but this just really brought it to a whole different level. In fact, we've already met again the superintendents to talk about specifics. In fact, we've already met again, the superintendents to talk about specifics. We have some homework we're working on, and we're getting back together in December, um, putting together all of our protocols. And, um, you know, they say that if you go into a situation where you have to reunify families, you're only talking about 40 or 50 families an hour on reunification. Uh, it's a process and it's long and people have to know their roles. And if something did happen in a neighboring district, um, it wouldn't necessarily be the people in that district that are running that unification, it would be one of the other districts that would come in and run that for them. So we've spent a lot of time, I've spent a lot of time with the other schools, we'll be walking our schools, talking about where families would go. And we never hope to lose any of this training, but it's a very important training for us to be doing. And I really want to thank the Chief Goss and the New York and Howard Heights Police Departments for putting this together. And it was a, I mean, for, for our Advent team, many of us were out for the day. For them, they were out two days of the training at the Seacenter. But it was definitely worth, uh, our time, one of the best trainings that we've been to, um, which is put out by, uh, some members from the state of Illinois, so it was very, very good. So it's something we continue to work on and refine.
Good luck.
Yes?
So we talked about, you know, school safety, just, uh, the SRO, you know, they, we, that conversation.
Right.
We talked about that we're looking to hire to have, like, someone available, any updates on that or?
Yeah, I know that they, um, are at this stage now where they, they did the test, the written test. They are finishing the psychological for a group of individuals and then they're working on the interviews. So I know they have some people in the mix. They've also just recently received a COPS grant, which will allow them to get additional police officers. So I know they are definitely interested in bringing, uh, more people, so because now that they have some funding for it as well. Um, I'm meeting with, um, the, I want to say December 4th, with the police department on that grant and just looking at, uh, how we can, um, provide more for the schools. So I'm hoping.
So we can take them back and say, "Okay, we got some," and then, I mean, is it a go?
Yes. Well, you have, the board has proved that already.
Right.
We have, uh, budgeted the money for it, so yes, we.
Okay.
Now, they, it's processed still for them. Their, their person has to go, their people have to go through training. They then are in a role where they are, you know, doing an internship type of thing. And then they would be able to have a person process.
And do we interview, uh, is there a couple options for us to be interviewed and make a decision based on color?
Yes. So the, um, the agreement that we have, the intergovernmental agreement with them, is they will recommend some people, but we have rights to interview three individuals.
Right, okay.
That they, they will recommend as well. Any questions about that? Okay, so looking at policy, uh, tonight, uh, we are looking at Press Policy 116. Now, just to remind you, Press is the, um, organization that we subscribe to that updates our policies as they seem to get with legal decisions that are made in the state of Illinois. The Press Policies 116 really bring Title IX, the federal Title IX law, into the Illinois policies. Now, just as a quick reminder, um, the federal Title IX law, um, pretty much matches what Illinois has been doing for years. So even if you hear the Title IX might change federally, I don't know, you hear about this every other day on the news, Illinois still has those Title IX laws. So that doesn't mean that anything would change in Illinois unless Illinois changes their Title IX laws. So tonight, 116, uh, not too much going on with that. We'll, we'll do a second reading in December. You also have 117. Now, 117 is the first time that we've seen some different policy updates coming out. So I really would recommend that before our next meeting, you, you take a look at 117. Um, again, this is from our company that we work with, uh, through the Illinois School Board Association that recommends legal changes to our policy. Sometimes we have some, uh, decisions to make with that, like, yes, we want to follow this, sometimes we don't. So, uh, 117 has some interesting things in it that we finally see now, step away from just all the Title IX information. We'll do that in December, January, so no need to look at that tonight, but just, we want to bruise that for our next meeting. The 100 policies, we talked about last month, and just to kind of sum those up really quickly. 1:110, we had no change to. 20, we were just changing pre-k and preschool. And then 30, we were updating our mission, vision and commitments. Now, this look at policy is our own look at policy. So this is not the legal updates the Press is sending out to us, this is us. And you should have your wonderful policy binder tonight with you. Um, this will be your friend with all of our policies. Feel free, this is yours, write all over it, whatever you need to do with it. Tonight, um, Mrs. Garcia also gave you, uh, the 300s. So at some point, please put those into your binder, add those in. We'll look at the 300s next month. Looking at the 200s, uh, there are quite a few policies that I'm not recommending nor did I hear anything from you about changes. However, you certainly can always bring up changes, it'll help in any point if you feel. Uh, I'll get that one, I'm sorry, one, one more slide, I've got one. These policies, um, don't really need any changes, they are how you govern as a board. They're really all about you. Uh, taking like the, uh, I did have a board member ask about like the ethics, um, uh, answers that you need to do every year and as you run as a board. It's, it's all about like your oath, it's about, you know, how you conduct yourself in a meeting, it's, it's all things like that. So this whole list on this slide, we're not recommending any changes. There were a couple of policies, 2:150, we had a change in committees that we actually did in January of 22, I think it was, isn't it? 22. Um, that we changed the committees to what we see now. Those changes actually didn't happen when they were supposed to. So we, we submitted those to IASB and to Press. I did hear from them today that they are finalizing them. So Mr. Trabuzio has asked me as I move forward in policy changes to inform the board whenever our policy is updated, finalized. So I will let you know as soon as I hear from IASB on that change. And then if you look, uh, real quickly in the back of our binders at 2:260 and 2:265, these are actually already being changed as far as the individuals who are responsible for the Title IX coordinator and, um, uh, the compliance, the complaint managers. So Title IX coordinator and the non-discrimination coordinator has typically been the superintendent. Currently, right now, you'll see Ralph Graham's name is still listed there, so that will be changed to my name. And then as far as the complaint managers, we, uh, decided to put, uh, Mrs. DeVor down and Mr. Vietki. So that it is important to have a male and a female as the two. And then we, um, decided on Mr. Vietki since he's, he's in the other building. We thought that would be the best as the complaint managers. So that, actually, those changes are part of, um, 116. It's going to get a little bit confusing for our policies. But those, but there wasn't anything else. Is there anything else the board thought we should take a look at on the 200s? Hopefully, when you review the 200s, all of that made sense to you, since that is, those are your walls. The 300s, as I mentioned, Mrs. Garcia put at your place tonight. Uh, there aren't too many, I think six, seven classes, something like that. So I think we can look at the 300s in December. I think those are the general school administration. Any questions about policy? Policy is one of those areas that is so critical when we need it. That's why it's very important for us to take this kind of to the floor. It is kind of, I know and I appreciate all the time you've put into it. Over onto the Buildings and Grounds Department of my report. We have submitted the State Maintenance Grant. The State Maintenance Grant, which typically comes out about every other year, although lately it's kind of coming out a little sooner than that, is a 50/50 match. So in this grant, we spend up to $50,000 and the state then allows us to put in up to $50,000 of a matching amount. Uh, after a long discussion about this at our Buildings and Grounds meeting last month, we decided to put this money towards asphalt at Giles and LEED. So about $100,000 in either, um, seal coating, which basically, seal coating is when they, they just seal over the asphalt, clearing any of the cracks and kind of clean it up, um, down to grinding and pouring. There are some areas, uh, like the LEED school parking lot, that we will look at grinding and pouring. Um, basically what they did on the streets in Norwich, they took down a couple of inches layers, they put out a new grinding board. I am, um, meeting with, um, the mayor also to discuss the aprons on the front of LEED and the front of Giles, since technically those are not our property, but we will be working on a communication and in cooperation with the town. That probably will happen in the summer, because as we've seen, that's very difficult to do there as well.
Talking with the mayor would be to confirm if we can do that or confirm that they will do it because it's a problem?
Confirm that we will do it and if they would like to assist us with the cost of that, that would be wonderful.
The, the, the one I struggled with is the one at Giles because we can't dictate who we can park as a pod.
We do have the spots up now.
Oh, yeah.
The signs up, mhm. Yes. The Giles, there is Giles parking, uh, with a little sticker on the back only, um, um. It is, so if I'm standing at the building and looking out at the building, it's everything on the right. There are some spots on the very left towards the gym area that those signs are not up on, but all the rest of it is.
But it's seven to four.
Seven.
But the residential, I think it was 10 spaces.
Correct, 10 spots.
So if they were all, all right.
So if I'm standing at Giles and I'm looking, not looking at the building, I'm standing at the front of the building, they are towards the gym.
Right, all right.
Not, depends how much way you're looking at. You probably look at it on each side as I turn.
Two different.
Yeah, by the gym, seven to four, I should.
In that, in that, like?
Correct.
Needs to be seven, yeah, just up here on the one side.
Um, building grounds consideration, that kind of works hand to hand with, uh, the parking lot, LEED is light.
Correct, mhm, that is one of the areas that would go into this, this State Maintenance Grant. But that is a concern of ours because the parking lot is so dark. So Mr. Sellers actually has been doing some research into some lighting, um, out there that is, um, solar and some other school districts, some park districts that he has visited that have these solar lights, which then would say that we wouldn't have to dig in and put in electrical power underneath there. So that's one thing we're considering at this point, some lights for that area.
We're talking at LEED or Giles?
LEED.
What about at Giles?
Giles is actually interesting, um, very, lights up very bright in the front of Giles. However, the timers have been off. So we did not put those lights on at 3:30 because of the time change. Um, that night that I met over there with the Superintendent Advisory Committee, when I welcomed them, it was very dark. Like, I had to put my phone, the lighter on my phone to bring them on into the building. Then when we left later, it was like daytime, those lights are so bright.
Really?
In the front of Giles, yeah. So then I talked to Mr. Sellers the next day and they, they weren't going on until 8:30, so that's why it was not.
I remember his parent teacher comes this last week and I just feel like anytime I'm digging up my daughter have jobs, it's always pretty dark on, on Oreo.
Well, I'll look at that, thank you.
But they really are very bright.
No, we certainly can move the lights over there as well, especially if we can get those, those, um, solar lights to work. If that works out for us, then we wouldn't have to do anything.
Not so much a concern on the column because the street is a little bit wide, but when you get to Oreo and there's people parking all over the place, it's a lot harder to see bad people all over.
I did hear from the state, um, this week about the infrastructure grant. I had to, uh, Mrs. DeVor and I had to sign on on a final budget number. I did, um, send it back with a bunch of questions, which I did not pay back to the state. Um, but this is, these are the final numbers, was $30,000 in materials, $30,000 in concrete basin area, and then $115,000 on wire and electrical work is what's in the budget right now, so. Fingers crossed that we're going to hear, um, a final, final approval on this and more information on how to.
Is this the same thing as what we all call the marketized?
Correct, that's Giles Infrastructure Grant, correct. And it can only be used at Giles, it was written only for Giles. Uh, community, just wanted to point out as we were talking a little bit about the tracks earlier, um, the, one of the other pieces that I heard from the advisory committee is how much that they really enjoy this community event section going on here at the tracks, on the tracks now that have things from, like, this particular one is the storytime going on at the Eisenhower Library, um, which is a multilingual story night that, that they've been, uh, having, which is wonderful for many of our families, with, that they have Ukrainian, um, Arabic and Spanish and Polish times. So just wanted to point that part out onto the tracks. There's a lot of information on the right side of the tracks, starting with the schedule for the week that has all the different things going on. Then the main part here are all the Giles news, which we split up into different events going on. The support, which the support and information at Giles are things and, and also definitely that have been out there every month. We haven't been taking those away. The PTA NSF, which I'll put in a plug in for the NSF Bingo, which we're not having Bingo in December, but our next date is in January. We had Bingo last Friday, it was a lot of fun, good time. And then, um, our Park District, Ridgewood, Howard Heights programs that are all on the side. Then we end with all the information on lunch and lunch orders. Down, if you scroll down on the tracks, you will see some, um, current things that are going on in the buildings. As Dr. Raviola mentioned, um, Stanley, is that his name? Was here, uh, from the Berge this past week, which I think was a PTA event at Old School. So these are the Giles pictures, which was a lot of fun. So wanted to point out some things in the tracks that are going on. Following up, I did meet with, uh, Dr. Lasky at Union, I'm sorry, at Ridgewood to learn a little more about their competency rubrics, um, really interesting information. So what I have up for you now is the Reading Critical, Reading Critically Competency Rubric. So what was explained to me is these rubrics that they've created have six different levels. And this same rubric is used in all of their reading classes from freshman to senior. So, um, what they do is they, their goal then is for their students, by the time they're in their senior year, to be on that level four of career-ready or level five of college-ready or level six of already performing at college level. Um, and it's the same rubric that they see when they're freshmen, all the way through to when they're in, um, their final year in high school. They then take this score, so for example, a, and you can see on the left side over here, all of the standards, very, very much like our standards, you know, that are built into ICAN statements. Again, just very much like we have on our standards-based report card. So so far, all of it pretty much looks. So so far, all of it pretty much looks the same as far as the levels, as far as the way the rubric is done. This is something, by the way, when I mentioned the proficiency scales that we're working on, this is what we're near three or four of them currently right now. And then they, so he mentioned, like, if you're a freshman and you're at a level two on here, that's actually really good, because we don't expect our freshmen to be on level two, they're probably more on the level one, isn't it, as they move through their freshman sophomore junior year, it's gonna get into those higher four, five, and six level areas. They use this also then to turn it into a grade at the end of the semester, at the end of the grading period. That was a little more complicated to understand exactly how, where your score on here turns into a grade, but they do turn into grades at the end. Just to follow up, mostly it was Mr. Bararty's statements, but I'm sure this is all, I should say to all of you on how this works. We've kind of kicked around the idea for the last couple of years with Mastery Connect on moving away, that way from standards-based, because standards-based is important, but looking at, do we want to assess a grade level, like an A, B, C grade level, to our standards? And that's something we can do, it just is something that will take some time, for a couple of reasons. A, we don't have our scales done yet, so this is something that we're still working on. And B, the system we're currently using right now, which is called Mastery Connect, does not allow for a hybrid program like that. As I know, I mentioned a couple times to you, we are looking at changing over, possibly changing over our SIS system, we've been looking at a couple of them. We had two meetings last week with, one with Infinite Campus and one with Skyward. Skyward is, if you're familiar with, I didn't mean Ridge, Penoiar, or Ridgewood systems, that's what they use. Infinite Campus is also used by many area districts. So looking at that changeover. What we have to keep in mind when we change over something like that is it affects every single piece of the district. So we're talking about registration, when parents register, they're going into a different place. When they pay fees, they're going into a different place. When we put in information for registration, it's in a different place. Finances would be done differently. This would really be a very comprehensive change to the district. It's definitely something that we feel we, it's worth our time to look at. Because from the parent perspective, you are going into Power School one time a year to register, and many times forget what that registration login is. You are then going into Mastery Connect to look at grades, you're going into Pushpoint to pay fees, you're going into Gourmet Gorilla to order lunch, but then also going to Pushpoint to pay for the lunch. It's just we're not, we're not, we're not a great product to our families right now. And we can do that. But as I said, that's a process, finding when is exactly the right time for all the tracks to move over if we are moving them over. One of the things I think that's been really exciting about it, Mr. Biacki's been spending a lot of time looking at, is those two systems that we talked about, and possibly Power School, where you now have a scheduler. Because right now, much of that scheduling is at the junior highest on my hand. So if we can come up with a system that would actually feed the kids in and, you know, use parameters for scheduling, that would be very exciting, probably more for Ms. Gula that she doesn't know, will end up being, she'll be working a lot on very soon. But they start that, it's probably a four or five month process with the scheduling. So changing over from what we call a SIS system, which is our student identification system in the state, because that's where the state gets all our information from, we upload everything into the state from our system, is, will take us some time. So I think, John and Farison have the conversations, are we gonna be doing it this school year? No, but it is definitely something we can have the conversations about and see where we want to go. So what I want to thank you, I've really learned a lot about Ridgewood, and I think what it really helped me with, meeting with Dr. Lasky, was that we're very aligned with Ridgewood. And I think you've heard that over the last few years, how much we are lining up in our system and Ridgewood system. As far as our grades specifically go, Ridgewood is certainly fine with the way that we are grading, and our standards are really in line with what they're doing, they just take it to that next step. But they are so happy about working with us, and definitely, that's more with Mr. Biacki than anyone else, but they like the collaboration and the working together. One thing that Dr. Lasky and I talked about is when we get to this point of having these done, it really will be critical to have their math department meeting with our math department, which they do, but to specifically look at what is our level six, which our level six should be high school level, and then making sure that everything flows down from there. That is what they did, they met with Triton College to make sure that their level six was college level, and then make sure they plan everything back for them. Actually, that's a much design which we use very often to school when we're ready for that stuff. The teachers will be doing some PE on that in January, so that we can get that in on. That's our part about district dating, and December, we'll be looking at our final level. And that is everything in my discussion. Any questions?
Very informative, thank you.
Thank you.
I need a motion to approve the consent agenda 15A through 15G. I have a motion. Lauren, roll call.
This is Theodore.
Yes.
This is Ervah Garnfield.
Yes.
This is Mick Phillips.
Yes.
This is Deh.
Yes.
Mr. Bararty.
Yes.
Mr. Trabuzio.
Yes. Motion passes. On to board comments. Any comments from the board?
I have a comment. I think you all noticed this handout. This is strictly on the website for the Light North Athletic Conference and our spectator information. What I am proposing is that Giles have a no cellphone policy for the students during sporting events. If you look on this information, you'll see that five schools already have this. No cell phones allowed in the gym. If a student needs to call or text, they can go into the hall, for example, here, they could go to Anderson Mall. I do want to say that Giles does a great job of the staff monitoring during games, but I can speak from personal experience that some kids do take flattery photos of our athletes. And I would like to look at this more as not a restriction on cell phones, but more of a show of support, a way to celebrate and respect our student athletes and their dedication to their sport. So, yeah, that's what I'm asking, the cellphone policy.
Are you proposing much of a, but a minor question?
So what I think that no cell phones allowed in the gym, is that one of the students? Or that being... Well, I feel like parents, I mean, obviously, can use the phones. I feel like, like I said, Giles is really good about watching and monitoring, but I feel like having a policy is something that we can say, hey, we need to follow this policy. Hey, are you taking photos? Because also, I know we had an athlete in boys' basketball, he ran into the, he ran into the stage, and a lot of kids took videos of that, took pictures of them crying, and, yeah. So, I mean, I've got a few other reasons I could say, but I don't want to say one.
So this, why did she, is this like for your students, like this goes to the students?
This is just spectator in general, it says, so if you go to their... Yeah, so if you go to, like, directly to their website, if you wanted more information, you'd probably have to go to each school, but if you look, this is what Mr. Deh gives out, and the first time I saw this was with Sylvia on the basketball team, and I thought it was really great. So, and I know that some kids, again, they're gonna sneak their phones, I get it, but this way, the staff can say, hey, we have this policy, so.
So if we were to change it, or if it's a whole policy, would we consider...
It's a, it's not a policy as far as our policies go. It goes in line with our policies, because when students are at a game, it's still a school event, so we definitely couldn't have a rating here. But I don't think it needs an actual policy change as far as...
Yeah.
Although, I looked at our handbook and seen that was... Mr. Biacki, do you have any idea if our handbook has that in there, or how that works?
For the...
For the, when this says, is there a policy for visiting students? So maybe...
Excellent, no, I mean, so the procedures that you're referencing, I wrote, and we put in place for students, for example, other students of schools that live close, like Union Ridge and Penoiar, we put that rule in, that procedure in place to eliminate any issues, because we were having, at some point, we were having issues, we were constantly throwing students out, and it just became a distraction. So I worked with the athletic director of the Light North Athletic Conference, and they came up with this document that they would share out, and we, so we put that language in, and when we have a game versus Union Ridge and Penoiar, I actually emailed their principal, just reminding them of our expectations, that if a student would like to come and watch the game, they need to have an adult with them. Our students all have to have, as you see, their ID with them. In regards to the cellphone, we still operate as, you're in school, and cell phones are often away during the day. It is very difficult with the number of individuals that come, adults and students that come to the game, for staff to monitor, but if they do see a cellphone out, they are to remind that student to, to put that cellphone away. Based on recommendation, I can go in and edit this document and just make the necessary changes. I will wait for, you know, Mrs. Guzik to give me that direction, and I will go ahead and make any changes that the board sees fit.
I think it's great of you, I think the board is okay with that. I mean, even if it is something that we've been doing, Mr. Biacki, having a rating somewhere, as we have learned, is so important. And especially the coaches getting it out, you know, maybe the other coaches are getting it out too in other sports, they should know what our policy is. I guess what I'm stuck on is word visiting. Does visiting mean only the students who are not our students? Because I'm assuming they're saying our students shouldn't have the home...
I'm saying any students. Anyone that's like a student, anyone that looks like they're up to no good.
Exactly. Any, any students. So let's think about that as well, Mr. Biacki.
Okay.
What's interesting is it says, is there a policy for visiting students, but if you look down the column, a lot of schools address things about their own students and visiting students in the section.
We might need...
We were actually, we were actually, I believe, we were the first district that updated this document, and then all the other school districts started adding, adding to it.
Right. I mean, looking at some of these where it says they have a student section and so forth, would that be, if we had a student section, be easier to monitor, where our students are?
So we actually, when we came out of COVID, we had a student section, and it's the section that's farthest away from, it's the, I'm sorry, it's the closest to the stage on the, in the large bleachers. That section, we've identified as our student section. We still have a poster on the wall that says student section in that area, but if a student comes with a parent, obviously, many times, they sit with their parent, but if they're not, if one of our students come and they're not with a parent, we encourage them to kind of sit over there. We keep a shaft around, depending on the, on the sport, if it's a, for example, basketball is, a lot of individuals come to that. So we have more than one staff member that is supervising. We always have one at the main entrance, we want to make sure that we have a secure main entrance, in case there's an issue, a staff member there, and then we also try to keep another staff member on the east end of the gym, closest to the large bleachers and the stage where our students tend to sit.
So I think we could improve on the lawyers there, make enough data.
Do we have one of these for outdoor spectators, or not? I mean, it's really large, right? Same across the street.
I'm just curious.
We have had that issue where if there is someone I can deal with, adults that can come to an outdoor game, and they do stand across the street, they do. We can look into that as well. This is the, when I have the monthly meetings with the superintendents, with the Light Area Superintendent Association, that we discussed, we can definitely bring that up. Our next meeting is the second weekend in December.
Any other board comments? Okay. Consider a motion to adjourn in close session to discuss the appointment of one compensation discipline performance on dismissable specific employees to purchase or lease a real property for the use of public body, including meetings held for the purpose of discussing whether a particular parcel should be required, student disciplinary cases, and review of closed session meetings. Can I have a motion?
No.
Motion second. Renzo and Amanda.
Mr. Bararty.
Yes.
This is Mick Phillips.
Yes.
This is Theodore.
Yes.
This is Ervah Garnfield.
Yes.
This is Deh.
Yes.
And that's Mr. Trabuzio.
Yes. The motion passes. We will leave the conference room in 10 minutes, we'll report this at 9:00 PM. Let's roll it. We are now back in open session minutes, 10:46. On to personnel action items. I will motion to approve 18A1 through 18B2. Can I have a second?
Second.
Amanda, roll call please.
Mr. Trabuzio.
Yes.
Mrs. McPhillips.
Yes.
Mrs. Theodore.
Yes.
Mrs. Ervah Garnfield.
Yes.
Mrs. Deh.
Yes.
Mr. Bararty.
Yes.
The motion passes. Board meeting reflection. I need a motion to adjourn this meeting at 10:47. Can I have a motion?
Motion second.
Lauren, Amanda, all the papers say aye.
Aye.
We'll say nay, the meeting is now adjourned.